Let's come to order. The plates tonight will be led by Mr. Riley Osborne.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please join us for a moment of silence? Okay, thank you. Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion is adopted. Consent agenda.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion is adopted. Number six.
Okay, we have three new principals as a result of three former principals retired. Each of these gentlemen have worked in the system for some time. Each just displayed an ability to lead, a passion for education, and I'm proud of all three. I know they're all going to do a good job. First up, replacing Ms. Holt in at Eagle is Mr. Bill Toll. Bill's been assistant out there for many years. How long, Bill?
I've been assistant for six years.
Okay, very good. Congratulations. Next, replacing Pat Ester at Rock Springs Middle, and if any of you guys want to say anything, please feel free to do so, is Chris Tredaway. Chris has been with the system a pretty good while. He's been assistant at Rock, Bell Middle for the last few years, and I feel pretty strongly Chris did a good job. Congratulations to Chris. And Mr. Rick Powell. Rick has the dubious distinction of replacing Mr. Rakes. He's been the principal there for thirty-seven years, and he certainly has his hands full, but he's definitely up to the job. He's been there. He's been faithful to Smyrna High and Mr. Rakes all these years, knows the system, and I have every confidence he'll do a good job, Rick. So, congratulations. He's the new principal of Smyrna High, Mr. Powell.
Thank you all for coming. We wish you the very best in this upcoming academic year. Okay, visitors. We have one visitor. Ms. Ann Marie McCormick. Please step up. Welcome. We ask that you confine your remarks to three minutes.
Okay.
Thanks for coming. Take it away.
Well, thank you for listening to me tonight. I'm a parent of a child that attends campus school. My son began there in the fourth grade. When I made the commitment of sending my child there and the commitment to the school, the fundraisers and all of that, I was told and expected that he would be there for three years going through the sixth grade. Now I find that in jeopardy. I am not so sure that I would have sent my son to campus school for a two-year period. I found the teachers there all outstanding. I've seen some of the remarks online, and I adore Dr. Bridgman, so I'm not sure what all that other stuff is going on. The board knew well in advance that new middle schools would be streamlined and brought into service, and knew that there was the potential for parents wanting to move their children out. I think that we could have and should have made that known, that the sixth grade would be going. Now, last year you only had nineteen students. This year you're between thirty and thirty-five. I would expect next year, given how parents are relating to the new middle schools, that it may in fact do well. And I do think the board could have been more proactive in this. Based upon my calculations, that with a salary and benefit package of an additional teacher versus being able to service thirty-five, these two teachers being able to service thirty-five students, spreading that amount is only a couple of thousand dollars per school, where no student is going to have a significant impact, whereas if the school remains at class size, that class level remains open, thirty, thirty-five students can directly be impacted. The board has a unique opportunity with the reduced class size. They have the opportunity for increased time on core subjects, introducing additional elective classes such as critical thinking, drama, foreign languages, how to survive middle and high schools. The board will be voting tonight whether to eliminate a grade, thereby directly impacting these thirty to thirty-five students, or spreading the cost over forty-five schools. Tonight you will in fact teach our children a valuable lesson in ethics. Either you keep your promises that you will educate our children, or making the promises has no value, and not to keep them, thereby teaching our children the promises have absolutely no value. And I think it's an important ethics lesson for our children, one that I have discussed with my child. And the elimination of the sixth grade, I am uncertain. I've contacted K to twelve to think about homeschooling. I think a lot more thought has to go into the fact that we who entered at the fourth grade level were promised something, and now you're taking that away. Thank you.
Thank you. That leads us right into number eight on the agenda.
Change the grade structure at Homer Peter Campus School. Rutherford County School Board adopted grade structure as pre-K through five, six through eight, and nine through twelve. We're experiencing an increasing number of Homer Peter Campus students exiting at the end of their fifth grade year so that they can become a member of their zone middle school cohort group. Some of the possible reasons that exist are enrollment at Central Magnet, enhanced music opportunities, athletics, the two new middle schools, and more curricular offerings. I'm recommending that you approve changing the grade structure at Homer Peter Campus School, grades K through six, grades K through five, beginning the 2013, 2012, 2013 school year.
So moved, and I'd like to make some comments after we.
Okay.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Wayne.
Just that the promise that this board makes is to give every child in this county the very best education that they can possibly get, and that the system can possibly provide. And with rezoning, we can't promise anyone will stay in a particular school, because it's just, we continue to grow even in tough economic times. So, you know, what this does is give us a consistency throughout the county. K-5, and the only difference would be Eagle, but it's a K-12, so it's different from everything. So, you know, I just see this as a good move, and I got one email, no phone calls, and of course, the lady that, Ms. McCormick, that gave her opinion tonight. So, I would have expected a large stew and cry like we've had in the past, you know, when we're making a change like this. So, there wasn't, there wasn't any outcry from any of the parent groups.
Other discussion?
Maybe just an additional comment. I agree with everything Wayne said. It is a year in advance, so there is time for people to make some accommodations for that as well. You know, I've had two children go through school, and I've been in a situation where zone lines changed. As a matter of fact, if my children have been of the right age, their high school zone would have changed three times in that eight-year or seven-year period of time. So, it's just part of the deal. I think it's the, I think it's the right thing to do for the system.
Tom.
Well, I didn't look at this as being a zone line change. Campus school is, it's an open school. Put application in. If this, if these children have not been accepted, they've been going to their zone school to start with. And what we're doing is bringing things in line, and we're actually allowing those sixth graders, in my opinion, to get off to a good start, whether it be at Central Middle or their zone middle school, because they'll go in with everyone at the same time. Whereas if they, if you wait a year, then they're going in, you might say, as the lame duck type situation. So, I looked at it as a positive move instead of force for the kids and their education. And I think it's the right, right thing to do for those students.
Other discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion is adopted. Number nine.
We've had considerable discussion on the next two items last night, and that said, number nine is to approve, first to the top scope of work year two, by August 3, 2011, school systems must submit a revised scope of work for first to the top year two funding. Last year, the board approved all four years of the scope of work with the knowledge that the annual revisions would be required in Rutherford County's year two scope of work. We are seeking approval to add a formative assessment component to the activities listed in the original proposal. Some dollar amounts for year two will be adjusted at the state finalized carryover funding from year one, which ends on September 30, 2011. Rutherford County Schools' four-year, first to the top funding allocation was $3,645,960. Recommend that you approve the activities to be included in the amended first to the top scope of work as year two as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
That's an unusual acronym there.
Yes, it is.
Other discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion is adopted. Eleven.
Vendor approval of a formative assessment program. United States Department of Education is required, Tennessee, to adjust their fiscal.
Sorry, ten.
Yeah, their fiscal year to begin in October instead of June for the first to the top funding. We have amended the 2010, 2011 year to extend through September 2011, but must resubmit proposals for the remaining three years when the state provides the appropriate forms. In the initial approval, the state did not permit systems to include funding for a formative assessment product, but now allow formative assessments to be included because the state withdrew the funds for this statewide initiative. This is a request for vendor approval of a formative assessment software program to be paid with first to the top funding. And we did an RFP on this. There were twelve to fourteen people that partook in that, and we're recommending that Riverside Publishing is the, as the formative assessment vendor using first to the top allocations, subject to state approval of Rutherford County's first to the top allocation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion is adopted. Now we can do eleven. I was so excited earlier.
Approval of Java textbook purchased. Central Magnet School is adding a Java computer programming course for 2011, 2012, and requesting the approval of a Java textbook not on the state textbook approved list. Recommend that you approve the adoption of Introduction to Computer Science Using Java by Glencoe and Introduction to Programming with Java, a Problem-Solving Approach by McGraw-Hill.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion is adopted. Twelve.
Facilities. A. Central Magnet School renovation change order. Robert Biskin and company submitted change order number one in the amount of $25,421 for the work completed at Central Magnet School. Change order covers additional flooring and painting throughout the main building and annex. The original contract amount was $1,719,295, bringing the total contract to $1,744,716. Change order will be funded through the building program for the remaining funds in the Central Magnet renovation. Recommend that we approve change order number one in the amount of $25,421 for Robert S. Biskin and company for the Central Magnet School renovation. This will make the new contract amount for Robert Biskin $1,744,716, with the change order to be funded through the building program.
Quick question, just, it mentions a building fund balance still remains, and how much of that is there, and how much of that do we anticipate needing to spend to finally clear the books on this thing?
There, this clears the book on this contract. We had approximately $25,000, $26,000 left, and we're redoing all the sidewalks out in front. As a matter of fact, there's one on today. They were torn. There's so much damage out there in there, and we're afraid the safety hasn't. So, we're taking that balance, that money, and using it out there. And it'll be the fund for Central Magnet School to be balanced out with these road free money.
Moved to approve.
Thank you.
Second. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
This gang doing the sidewalks too?
No. We're, we have another contract, and we got three prices on it to get it.
Are we holding any money from this gang for anything out at Central Middle or Central Magnet?
There, I think we've got a little bit on them, but we're pretty much, everything's in pretty good shape, and it's, you know, this is getting to this point. It's been a year. We had some odd vanes hanging out. We'll make sure they're completed, they're completed, and then get a little negotiation going on with this final change order, and we finally received the final paperwork on yet.
Other questions? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion is adopted. B.
B. Eagle Scout Video Tower Project. Ms. Vick, Blackman High School principal, has submitted a request for permission to construct a video and observation tower adjacent to the football practice field at the school. Construction will be done by scout Riley Osborne to complete his Eagle Scout certification. Tower will be ten feet off the ground, will be eight by eight foot platform built of pressure-treated pine. Access will be limited with a locking gate, and the tower will be constructed at no cost to the board, and recommend that you approve an eight by eight by ten pressure-treated observation tower adjacent to Blackman High School football practice field by Riley Osborne, Eagle Scout candidate at no cost to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Riley's here without, unless there's objection, why don't we ask him to step up and tell us a little bit about his project? Give you some TV time. Is this what you wanted or no?
Do you have a question?
No, I was just going to commend you.
Oh, okay, okay. Say buy it tower next to the football field to help us videotape practices, to help with preparing for games. It'll be locked. Nobody will be able to get into it. That was the main concern for me and everybody else that was part of coming up with a plan to build it.
And what's your timetable?
Well, I have to have it built by my birthday, September 4th, because I turn eighteen. So, I'm hoping for August 6th and 7th, somewhere around there.
So, when you take a project like that treated lumber is pretty expensive, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, who funds that purchase?
I do. I've sent letters to my pediatrician and TOA doctor that's helped me with sports and stuff, and family members, and did a little fundraiser at a lifting thing we had for football.
Great. Yeah. Anybody have any comments or questions about this?
Just that we have benefited so often from these Eagle Scout projects at the different campuses, and we thank you very much.
Thanks, Riley. Best of luck with your project.
Thank you, guys.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion is adopted. Thirteen.
Financial matters. Education Jobs Fund, 2012 budget. This remainder of the Assistant Education Jobs Fund grant needs to be approved for the 2011, 2012 school year. $4,124,329.87 of the initial. $7,634,692 is still available. The $4,124,329.87 in staff and benefits expenditures will be used as shown on the two-page budget presented to cover part of the August to September payroll for staff in the schools. This reimbursement of the general purpose school and cafeteria fund expenditures is built into the 2011, 2012 GPS budget and allows us to pay the non-recurring bonus that is in this year's budget. Recommend that you approve the 2012 Education Jobs Fund budget of $4,124,329.87 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Last night I've asked a couple of questions about the bonus that will be paid, and this seems to be the last time that this would come before the board, before that bonus is paid. Inasmuch, I would like to offer an amendment to this motion, because the bonus that gets paid, I'd like to see, as we discussed at the board retreat back in February, some type of criteria around that bonus for the benefit of the teachers, as well as the benefit of taxpayers, that we can attach the bonus to some of the excellent performance that we've had in the school system. I'd like to offer that we approve the 2012 Education Jobs Fund budget of $4,124,329.87, subject to the requirement of the Director of Schools' returning of payment schedule and criteria for board approval prior to dispersments.
Okay, so your memo would specify that Mr. Gill would bring back his plan before us before we approve this for the final time, is that what?
Before dispersment. You know, this, Mr. Sandvig indicated last night, or, yeah, last night, that we needed to go ahead and allocate this money and get it into the proper accounting structure, and that needed to happen in this meeting. And so, we certainly want to do that. But before we do dispersment, which he indicated might be in October or so, I'd like to see, we had discussed as a board, and never come to any conclusion, this would be that occasion to make a decision, but that there is some type of criteria that we would, we would say, because of this accomplishment, we are then offering and authorizing this bonus. You know, there's certainly accomplishments that we've done. I'd just like to directly tie some of those to this so that we get the proper credit.
I'd like to see if there's a second.
Second.
Okay. I know who wants to speak, but Wayne, go ahead.
Well, and I'm not sure that I disagree, but I see a problem in that we, the bonuses are going to employees inside the schools themselves, and then we have employees outside the schools. So, you know, I don't know how, in a short time, that we could ask the Director of Schools or his staff to really come up with something, you know, at this time. I would, I would, I'm going to vote against this, and the reason I am is, I think this may be something that you might want to bring back, you know, and put on the agenda and go through the work session and all that. I wouldn't want to put that pressure coming up that criteria this soon, right here at the beginning of the school year.
Can I come?
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that. I don't know where to begin on that. For example, you know, when you've got, you know, are we talking about individual criteria? Are we talking about criteria for a particular school? I mean, how that school performed? How are we going to establish criteria at this stage for, you know, physical education, the music course teacher, the ROTC teacher? I mean, they're not tested, those subjects aren't tested. It would be really, to me, difficult to do. And I don't think that you have in mind excluding anybody from getting the bonus. I don't hear you saying that, I don't think.
I think it would be a very rare occasion if an employee were excluded, but, you know, I am kind of drawing from, here recently Governor Haslam had a situation where he was going to offer pay raises to state employees, except those who had been written up on disciplinary action. I thought as a taxpayer, that was a fair standard, and we might employ something akin to that, but I'm not saying that necessarily that that should be debated or decided tonight, only that there is some criteria. If we don't have this criteria, we run the risk of public opinion being we're handing out a bonus, and there's not an explanation for what did we achieve for that bonus. I just want to put an explanation with the bonus. And it can be that we were the fifth best achieving school system among large scale. I mean, we've seen numerous charts that Mr. Odom has presented to us about the value that, of education, you know, for the dollar investment, the return on investment that we've gotten. And those are certainly system-wide standards that would be justified both with classified and certified employees. It just attaches achievement to the reward. Without that, it could be perceived by the general public that it's a reward because the funds are available.
Of course, wouldn't that be true of any across-the-board raise? That same perception could be.
Yeah, but that's called cost of living, and I think the general public has a perception of cost of living raise, okay, I understand what that is. Bonus has a different connotation. We did something to get a bonus. I just want to define what that did something was.
With respect to what I've brought up earlier about the PE teacher, their ROTC, and the music, and some others that don't test, give me some suggestions on how we establish criteria for those guys with respect of issuing a bonus. I don't know how to do it.
I don't know how we do it in such a short time.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm offering a two-month timeframe here, because dispersment is not forecasted until October.
Terry.
I would, just thinking out loud on this thing, I think I, just personally, I would recommend we look at this thing down the line somewhere. I look at this bonus deal as far as what we basically told our employees, as far as, I know it's not a pay raise, but basically what they're going to be getting in this next year, and we've built in the budget already. So, I'd hate to have to take, you know, I'd hate to see us take it away from anybody this late in the game. That's just my opinion.
I understand your logic, Aaron. Part of it's just a terminology issue. If we called it something other than bonus, that might have been better from the beginning, because bonus does often sort of imply that there's some sort of achievement level expected before you get it. And to me, this is more like a one-time supplement in order to make up for the, how many years has it been since there's been an across-the-board raise?
Four.
Other discussion on this? Okay, we're voting on the amendment then, to add what Aaron has suggested to this. Motion. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no.
No.
It sounds like to me like the amendment's defeated. Now, we're back on the original motion. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion is adopted. Fourteen.
Transportation. Per Section Eight of the bus contract, which covers the signability of a contract from the contract holder to another individual, the Transportation Department has received a request from Bart Smith, contractor of Bus 150, to transfer a signed contract to Clarissa Smith. Ms. Smith is currently a contractor for Rutherford County Schools. Ms. Smith is no longer able to maintain the bus contract due to health issues. Under Tab Six is a letter from Ms. Smith requesting the bus contract be transferred to Clarissa Smith. Recommend that you transfer, assign the bus contract, pardon me, the contract of Bus 150 to Clarissa Smith.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Fifteen.
Policy revisions. There are, I believe, six, five or six policies that are reflected on the webpage. We've discussed them at the policy meeting. I believe this is the, some revisions and revision to policy 6.303, interrogations and searches. Do you want to read all these or just?
No, it's done. Unless a board member is eager to hear it. As you said, it's available online for the public to take a look at.
Might just say there's a policy 5.302, there's a revision to sick leave, policy 5.110, compensation guides and contracts. There's a revision to 5.113, professional development for certified employees, policy 1.600, policy development and adoption. And we're recommending that you waive the second reading. Second meeting limitations allow the board to take immediate action on the policies presented. And we're recommending that you approve policies 6.303, 5.302, 5.110, 5.113, and 1.600 as revised and proposed as recommended by the policy committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I assume we're waiving the second reading, so this is done by the start of the school year. Is that right, Angel? Let's vote on those. Well, do we have, we just had one motion for both.
We do have one motion.
Are you comfortable voting on both motions at the same time?
Yes, sir.
You look comfortable. So all in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Takes us to general discussion.
I got one quick comment.
Yeah.
If nobody else.
I don't see anybody.
We just had a visitor today, Ms. Michaels, that came to tell us that Mr. Jordan, it wasn't feeling too great. Had been in the hospital for a short time and hopefully he'll get better. Mr. Jordan served on the school board for many, many, many years as a board member. Also was chairman of the board and he contributed very much to public education in this county. And every once in a while, he'll still call Ms. Michaels and myself to give his opinion on certain things. And he generally has one too, doesn't he, Joyce?
Yes, he does.
But he was really a sharp man and he did a lot of good. So I know we all hope Mr. Jordan gets feeling better.
Thanks for telling us that.
Yes, sir.
Other discussion? Hearing none, we are adjourned.